Commission, your order, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Scott Rubbley for the flag. His party question.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not Scott, but I'll get to take a shot at it. Hey, this evening, Mr. Chairman, we're glad that we've got our preacher from our church, Pearls of Christ. He's our assistant preacher, Mr. Travis Wanamaker. And we want to invite you to come out to our fish supper that'll be coming up the first Saturday in June. We'll be at four o'clock, and we'd like everybody to come. And Travis, if he don't catch enough fish, then Scott, he'll have some for us.
Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, here on earth as it is in heaven. So, Father, I ask you now, the ladies commissioners, I pray your Holy Spirit, Lord, would come and just give them the guidance and instruction that we all need, God. Lord, you said in your word, Lord, that he would send your spirit, and he would teach us all things. So, Lord, I ask that your Holy Spirit would rest upon each and every one of the commissioners. Lord, that it make the decisions that's best for this county. Lord, and we would also reflect to the state that this is a county that stands for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. So, I pray that every decision that's made would reflect that, God. And, Lord, I pray to God that Warren County would stand out as a light here in Tennessee, Lord. And that we would be a blessing to our state as well. And that we will follow in the ordinances that you've established. And that we ask all these things, and we ask your blessings, in the name of Jesus Christ. In your precious name and prayer. Amen.
I'll now turn it over to Mr. Scott Rubbley for our flag.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have with us Mr. Brent Dunley and his wife Janet and Kenneth. Brent is now a postmaster, but Brent had a few years of service. And I've got a brief bio to read about his Army service. Brent was Army Sergeant. Brent enlisted in the Army in 1992. He received his basic training in Fort Sill, Oklahoma. After basic training, he was directly stationed to Germany, in Berlin, with the Army Brigade Garrison known as the Berlin Brigade, where he served until 1994. After returning to the States in 1994, Brent transitioned to the National Guard, where he served until 2003. Brent left the service in 2003 with ranking E5 Sergeant. And as I said, he now serves as postmaster of Warren County. And we are grateful for his service in the military and his continued service to the community. And he's a good friend, and he said, "Keep it brief," so that's what I've done. You don't mind, ladies, in the flag.
All right, we'll do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Aw, man, I start to call 'em broke.
Michael Bell?
Here.
Carl Bowden?
Here.
Carleen Brown?
Here.
Charles Dodson?
Here.
Randy England?
Here.
Steve Lynn?
Here.
Steve Hamilton?
Here.
Brad Hillis?
Here.
Lance Hines?
Here.
Scott Hillen? Ron Lee?
Here.
Gary Martin?
Here.
Kenny Moffitt?
Here.
Stan McNoory? Casey Owens? Gary Fraser?
Here.
Chris Ricky?
Here.
Christie Ross?
Here.
Scott Rubbley?
Here.
Tommy Savage?
Here.
Donna Smith?
Here.
Philip Stow? Cole Taylor?
Here.
Blaine Luther?
Here.
We have twenty-one present tonight. We're going to move on to item number five, the adoption of our document. Motion to approve. We got a motion, Mr. Vale.
Second.
We got a second by Mr. Hilton. Any amendments to the document, Mr. Rubbley?
Mr. Chairman, I have two amendments tonight. If you will look on your agenda, Resolution Seven, that was actually item seven, which should be changed to Resolution Number Nine. That is, it says, it stated Resolution Seven, item seven. We actually have a number seven, which is one of the road amendments, and that needs to be changed to Resolution Number Nine. And then, item number eight, if you will look on your desk, you will have a new copy of that, which is GFFY 2425-33. That was updated earlier this afternoon in budget finance, and I'll put that in for a motion.
All right, got a motion. We got a second from Ms. Christie Ross. Any questions about the amendments to the document? Any none, all those in favor of approving the document, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Now, we're back on the original document. Everybody that is for approving our document tonight, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Passes unanimously. We've now approved our document for tonight. So, if anybody wants to sign up for public comment, now would be the time to see Mr. Hillis to sign up. And we'll move on to the reading of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the minutes as written and dispose of the reading. And I'll second.
I got a motion, Mr. Savage, and a second by Mr. England. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Being none, all those in favor of approving our minutes tonight, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. We'll move on to our elected official departmental reports. Mr. Lady Glenn, the Hollywood Department, first.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, the court, your financial manager report. If there are any questions, I'll try to answer.
Mr. Hilton?
Mr. Glenn, obviously, we've been through this last time he was up, and you didn't submit anything other than what Justin submits in his financial report. Obviously, I'd like a little bit more. Can you tell us what roads, or is there a list of roads that's been paved in the last twenty-four months?
I probably haven't had that thought, yes.
Okay. Do you have a list of roads that you plan on paving?
Well, that's subject to change. Of course, you always try to plan ahead, what I've always tried to do with the budget, and the planning of the work. Of course, like I've said before, Stephen, this is three or four times you've brought this up. You know, I'm elected to run the Highway Department. I've been here going on fifteen years, kind of commissioner. And this has all come up here like, I don't know why. I manage the budget. I keep a good fund balance. I never asked the county court for no more money. And I've had a good audit report. To me, how you run your department with your money is very important, and it's been important to me. And so, that's what I've always done. And a lot of highway departments don't give a report. They don't even go to county court meeting. But I do. People elected me to serve this county, and that's what I've tried to do. I've been through tornadoes, disasters, floods, worked through Christmas. And here you want me to give you a report, which I never have. And I've told you before, you know, I'm not going to.
Mr. Glenn, I appreciate you being here. I know you do not have to be here, but we, as county commissioners, do represent taxpayers. And I know that there's even some commissioners here that are sort of curious about their roads and when they're going to be paved. And so, you know, we're just asking, I'm specifically asking, for what roads have been paved? What roads are going to be paved? Because some people are curious, you know? And I know of three different commissioners, and they may stay nameless at this point, wanting to know when their roads are going to be paved, and they don't have an answer. Is it on the list, it's going to be done within this month, next month, this year, next year? You know, and that's just what we're curious about. And as taxpayers, I feel like we have the, we should be, we should know whether it is or isn't. So, there's not a report given, and so, I make a motion that we do not accept the report.
I have a motion on the floor. Can I hear a second to that motion? Are you seconded?
No, sir, I want to speak.
I won't do that. Put it back, I disposed of this, and is any second to that motion? Being none, second, the motion dies for the lack of a second. Now, Miss Smith.
Do I have the floor? You know, I've sat through the last couple of court meetings, and as a former department head of this county, I feel like Levy is transparent, as are all our department heads. And information that you want, Mr. Hilton, and anybody else who wants it, I'm sure would be able to get that provided to you upon request to his office. So, that's about all I have to say. I feel like, sometimes I feel like some department heads are picked on, and that's kind of what I'm feeling right now. Thank you for letting me offer my opinion.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion with Ripley for it.
All right, got a motion, Mr. England, and a second by Mr. Savage. Any more questions? Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hilton?
I've had some dealings with Mr. Glenn recently, and over my life, I'm a farmer, and we're always messing something up, and he comes and puts us into due interest. Every time I've ever had to call for anything, he either calls me right back or just shows up on site and does it without me asking to cancel. He has an excellent report in my book.
Uh, Mr. Rubbley?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not upset with Levy. He does a good job. I don't disagree with that, but we have several directors that has common courtesy, and they give us a report. And that's all we've been asking for. And we've been approving a report for probably, I have, over ten years that doesn't exist. And now, I'll be voting no on that. I'm not upset with Levy. He does a good job, but I will not approve a report that we do not receive.
Thank you.
All right, any more discussion?
I do have a quick question, just being one of the new commissioners. I know people mentioned before in the past, this is nothing to worry, it's just respectfully, if it's been going on this long, why are we just bringing it up?
Is that directed toward me?
No, I'm just directing toward whoever wants to answer.
I'll let you answer.
I'll take that that's directed toward me, because I am the one bringing it up and have been bringing it up. And I'll also address another messenger. I have asked for what roads are going to be paved, because there are some people wanting to know if their road's going to be paved. So, therefore, that's the reason I keep bringing that up. I brought it up in the last meeting. Three months goes by, we still don't know. To bring that up is, I've been a complacent commissioner. I've sat here and just went through the motions. Went through the motions. But whenever I get something that says no report, I can't in good faith sit here and say yes to something that's not there. So, I took it upon myself, to quit saying, I am not going to accept our approval of a report that's not there. And I don't feel like any other commissioner should approve a report that's not there. Whether he's doing a great job, not a great job, that's irrelevant. There's not a report.
Now, I understand, but I think my point was, he's been here fifteen years. Hasn't been brought up before, why, it's just now coming to, is my question. Nothing to worry about. I mean, I totally get the report from Rubbley and what Mr. Hilton said, but I'm just curious as to why it's been, like it's brought up now. It seems like a very long time ago, fifteen years, about giving a report, or I've been with it fifteen or less, and then we bring it up. That's just my question, is why it took so long to be an issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We do have two point four million, and four, we have $2,440,000 in contract services this year. It takes about $146,000 to pave a road eighteen foot wide and a mile. So, we've got enough money in our budget this year to do about seventeen miles of road, and it will be done. So, it just takes time. We don't have our own paving machine. We have contracted out. So, it takes time. I've been on this committee for twenty-seven years. Twenty-seven years. Thank you.
Any more discussion, Mr. Christie Ross?
Thank you. To address Mr. Ruby, I have asked that in the past. I'm not questioning his ability to do his job. I have questioned why there isn't a report when there's supposed to be a report. That's it. I just wanted you to know that somebody has actually asked that.
Any more discussion? I have a motion, a second. Mr. Hilton?
I don't want, I don't want to speak out of turn on our committee chairman, Mr. Prater, but I just recommend to anybody that's got any questions. Our meetings now are the first Tuesday at four o'clock at the Highway Department. If people've got questions, that's the place to come and ask them, when we're all sitting there discussing the Highway Department activities.
The Highway Bridge Committee, a week, the first Tuesday at four o'clock.
Yes.
They set that up at the last meeting. They done that. So, anybody's got questions, can come to that meeting, and can I ask anything? Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something, too. Not everybody can make the meetings. I was on the committee for a while, and I don't get in town until after four, sometimes six o'clock evening. But anytime I've ever asked Levy about anything, I've got an answer. And it's always been my understanding, because you're the fourth county executive I've served under, that he's under a different jurisdiction as far as the report is concerned, and that's why it's never been an issue. So, I think that is clarifying, because obviously, Levy feels like he's doing what he used to be doing. And so, we're still in a gray area here. I mean, I'm satisfied with what he presents. I see what he spends, and I know, like Gary says, and partially because I was on that committee for a while, he's always paving somewhere.
Mr. Chairman, also, you can call out there at the numbers two double oh seven. It's been that same number for about twenty years. And you can call out there, and those ladies can tell you just about anything that you need to know. They even run a patch shift out there, and they put their finger on anything that you need to know. Thank you.
Any more discussion? If there's no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving reports, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Let's have a whole couple.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bowden?
No.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
No.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Steven Hilton?
No.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
No.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
No.
Gary Fraser?
No.
Chris Ricky?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
No.
Scott Rubbley?
No.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
No.
Blaine Luther?
Yes.
Any other things to go?
All right, we got twelve yes and nine no, so the report's approved. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I appreciate everybody that voted for my support and here tonight. I've actually been in the operation over thirty years. Over thirty years, going on thirty-one years. And I've been a part of the main operation when the past superintendent was here. And this is the first time this has ever happened. So, I mean, it looks like I could be a target or something. It makes me feel kind of bad that y'all really don't trust the way I'm running the Highway Department, if you're considering that's part of it. Because I've had legal advice. I don't have to give a report. We never have. And like Mr. Ruby said, why does it all come up now? You know, I'm honest, I run the Highway Department like it's my own business, and we've got a lot of new equipment, and we've got a lot of stuff. And the thing about it is, you know, I've never asked for no more money. We've been in-house financing. If I wanted something, you know, ain't it all about the money? A lot of things about your money, how you manage what you get, how you stay within your budget. To me, financing runs the government, you know? And I've tried to do the very best I could. And, of course, these letters here, they still getting a little bigger each time. Some paper. I don't know who fills it out, you know? Next time, just put a whole full paper if you want to, you know? I mean, I'm operating by the law. I'm going by the law. I've had legal advice about this, and y'all that supported me tonight, I appreciate very much. And thank you that y'all did. Didn't vote for me, if that's y'all's opinion. If that's from your district, that's fine. You know, everybody's got a right to vote, you know, however they want to. As far as elected road superintendent, it's a big job. You don't call twenty-four seven. I take all the nine one one calls. All of it. Twelve, one o'clock, Christmas. And this paper right here, the numbers, tells the story, if you ask my opinion, how the Highway Department has been running efficiently. When we bought Manex Building for a hundred and fifty thousand, we had money in place that we could buy. And we keep a good fund balance. Like I've told some of the commissioners, if we had a tornado, and we had to have something, would I have to come and ask y'all for a million dollars to keep operating? No. Right now, the way it's running, I would have it in my budget, in my rainy day fund. So, to me, commissioners, it's all about the money, how you manage it, and how you take care of your budget. And thank y'all very much for your time.
Mr. Chairman, he just give a report. If he'd put that down in paper up there, five minutes, you know, that's all we're asking for. Thank you for your report.
Thank you. Now, we move on to number two, the sanitation report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Josh has gotten a very important meeting tonight. He had a baseball game, or a ballgame for Rex. And you can see, those detailed reports you're going to get on the county level is this report right here. And everybody had a copy of it to study. And if there's any questions, I'll try my best to answer. If not, we'll put Josh on the hot seat next time we see him.
Motion to approve.
A motion, yes, sir, and a formal motion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hilton. Any questions about the sanitation department report? Any other questions? Being none, all those in favor of approving reports, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. We'll move on to the Sheriff Department report. Mr. Jack McThee.
Good evening, everybody. Do you have my reports? You got any questions, I'll try to answer.
I motion for it.
We got a motion, Mr. England, and a second by Mr. Hilton. Any questions about the Sheriff Department report?
I see one is toward the actual budget or anything. I know we had Ron Sexton, I think, as, I think, a maintenance. Have we filled his, did anybody take his place or anything yet?
Uh, we've got it. We're interviewing for that position.
Any more questions? All in favor of approving the Sheriff's report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. I'll let Carleen have a more candid school's report, then?
I will, and including my education message, too. Tonight, the Warren County School Board is meeting, so Mr. Swallows is not able to attend. On their agenda tonight, they were planning to have their budget ready to go present to their full board. And, you know, because of the new model of financing and reimbursement from the state for children, they've had some changes. But their chief person, that Jennifer, Mary Jennifer is her name, her brother has passed away, and it's got some things held up on their budget process, as well as his grandson was injured and had to go be in Vanderbilt for about a week. So, they don't have it tonight. They're going to call a special session in the next, very soon, hopefully, he's up in another week, with the school board to review their budget. And then, a joint session with the Budget and Finance Committee and our Education Committee to go over their budget, so that it will be ready and will be presented, included in the June meeting for approval of the budget. So, our next meeting will not be until this budget is ready for the education meeting. He said that high school graduation went well, and they are getting ready to start, you know, the last couple of years, they've called it like summer school for helping kids get caught up and addressing some of their grades that he has work on it. But they got a new name for it, called the Warren County Acceleration Academy. So, that's going to be from June the second to June the twenty-sixth. And so, that's all I have to report. And did you have anything else?
Uh, we just need to make a motion to approve the report. We need to approve the report.
I make a motion that we approve the Warren County Schools' report.
So, they got a motion by Ms. Brown, and a second by Mr. Prater. Any questions for the Warren County Schools' report? Being none, all those in favor of approving reports, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. We'll move on to item number five, Mr. Cotton, the finance report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, the court, you have a report. Any questions, I'll do my best to answer them this time.
Motion said, second.
Mr. Rubbley, and a second by Mr. Hilton. Does anybody have any questions about our finance report, if you have your power? Being none, all those in favor of approving the reports, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. We'll move on to item number eight, our committee reports. We'll start with budget finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a meeting scheduled for this Thursday at ten a.m. That's unusual time, but it's the only time we can get the entirety of the committee together, and we hope to finish the budget and get a tentative number on the tax levy and consider raises. That'll be this Thursday at ten a.m.
Ten a.m.
That's all I've got, thank you.
Billy Graves?
Billy Graves has nothing to report at this time.
He come in agriculture?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each of you should have read the email from Allison Luth. Thursday, May the twenty-ninth, at six p.m. at the Milner Recreation Center, the Four Edge Awards, and admission is free to that. Also, Aviation Day, which is out a little place, but Aviation Day will be at the airport, June the twenty-first. So, mark your calendars for that. That also coincides with their third Saturday breakfast as well.
Do you have anything else for education, Mr. Brown?
No.
All right, we got that report two minutes ago. Financial management has nothing to report. Health and Wildfire?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did vote to extend the free adoption through the middle of July, so that...
July ten.
July ten, thanks. July, so that we can meet again and see what we can do. We've kind of reached a point where we're kind of... July ten, thanks. July, so that we can meet again and see what we can do. We've kind of reached a point where we're kind of stagnant right now. So we're gonna reintroduce that again and see if that helps us. And then also, uh, I know that a lot of people's been asking about the building and more work on that. I did contact some people from Capitad. Unfortunately, they're not gonna be able to build a house this year due to lack of support. And I was hoping maybe we could utilize some of their help, but, um, the county hasn't supported them the last couple of years, so I don't, I think that kind of dispersed right now. So if anyone knows anybody out there that can help with that, it would really help us out.
We, we met with someone this morning. He's given us a, a email back, so we'll see how that comes along. Uh, Mr. Fraser, Highway Bridge?
We have nothing to report at this time.
Uh, Policy Personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met on May the first. And we got reports from the Coats Department and the Judicial Commissioners. Our next meeting will be June the fifth, Thursday, June the fifth. And it will be at Meals on Wheels. And seating is limited. And, and she said that we would have some little finger food or something. And, uh, she wants to show us all around the place, so anybody who wants to come, uh, you might want to check first, because she said seating is limited, just the limited amount of people. Sitting at the table is like twelve. And of course, if anybody wants to stand, you know, they'd probably come to, but it'd be June the fifth. Thank you.
Uh, Safety?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, our EMS and our sanitation department is doing really good. The, uh, EMA is, uh, making some leaps and bounds trying to get caught up. There's still a lot of hard work to go, but, uh, Jason is doing a good job getting us in that right direction. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to advise Mr. Savage, you can't limit the people to come that meeting, because it's a public meeting.
Oh, that city.
Yeah.
City, who's saving?
All right, uh, County Correctional Partnership?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, uh, we have two hundred and thirty-nine inmates. We have forty-one female, hundred and ninety-eight males, and thirteen T D O C. Just to give you a little update, we are in the process of getting our flock system set up for the counties. They're getting permits acquired right now. And when we get that going, that'll be a very good thing for the county. And, uh, that'll help us out tremendously. So if you see, when we start the process of this, you see a little work in your area. That's what that's about. Okay?
Uh, Legislative?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
All right, we'll move on to item number nine. Do we have any public comments on it? No one's signed up to public comment. We'll move right on into new business. Uh, Mr. Cotton, the Tax Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the Tax Agreement for the twenty-twenty-three year. We have to approve this every year. Uh, we usually a year behind. That's the way it works. Uh, it passed both committees unanimously and isolated.
All right, we got a motion. Got a second, Mr. Hilton. Anybody have any questions about the Tax Agreement? Any no questions? I'll ask clerk Call World.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolton?
Yes.
Carlene Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Steven Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Ricky?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Roodland?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any one more change your vote?
All right, item number one passes twenty-one to zero. We'll move on to item number two, Mr. Ripley, the Google County Email Contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the contract for the county emails that you all receive. Uh, this one is for three years, which is, um, eleven thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and sixty cents annually, and isolated.
Got a motion from Mr. Ruble? Second for Mr. Savage. Any questions about the county email Google contract?
Got a quick question.
Yes.
Does this have, does this have anything to do with, have storage space? Because I know I have asked, um, a few times about having minutes dropped into a drive. And I actually talked to Justin about having those dropped into a, to a Google Drive. Um, does this include some of that extra storage space?
It's on the county website.
Yeah, it, it does include storage as it is. Everybody who has an email account with the county has so much storage. And we have several that have additional storage, but yes, those are included in that. Um, but like what he said, we did talk about that and we should have that drive set up. There should be a live link on the county commission site for committee minutes. They are actually in with the commission minutes.
That would be great if we could. I don't know that we got an email letting us know that it was live.
Oh, well, it's, it's there. We, they may not give an email to us, but it's there.
All right, thanks.
All right, I'll ask clerk Call World.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolton?
Yes.
Carlene Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Steven Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Ricky?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Roodland?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any one more change your vote?
Item number two passes twenty-one to zero. We'll move on to item number three, Mr. Gary Fraser, speed limit on Grebel Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to fix the maximum speed limit on Grebel Road in Warren County, Tennessee, from fifty-five to thirty-five. It's not really been posted, so fifty-five pretty much was the speed limit. So we're going to change that down into thirty-five mile an hour. Thank you.
You left that before a motion.
Yes, I did.
The second for Mr. England, and this did pass Highway Bridge. Can you have a slip? So anybody got any questions?
I do have a question. If there's other roads, uh, such as Chestnut Grove, which I've been talking about, uh, how, what's the process of getting, uh, speed limit posted like this?
Come down meeting.
Come down to the Highway Bridge meeting and, uh, then Mr. Goliath probably. Any more questions?
Was this road fifty-five mile an hour? I thought the county road was posted up on over forty-five.
If they're not posted, they're fifty-five. Anything that's not posted, five mile an hour.
Get it on post. Any more questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a footnote here. If we pass this tonight, we're hoping that we can give our Sheriff Luthen and his flash and sign, you know, the speed limit sign, to put it on that road and start to let people know that that is about the third file.
Any more questions? I'll ask clerk Call World.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolton?
Yes.
Carlene Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Steven Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Ricky?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Roodland?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any one more change your vote?
Item number three passes twenty-one to zero. We'll move on to item number four, Mr. Fraser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to take Hitchcock Drive off of the county, county road list. I think it's, uh, right off of Francis Ferry, by the Chapel Road somewhere around Rock Island area. And we voted in, uh, the pass to take it off. Thank you.
Uh, got a motion? I'll make that motion. I have a motion by, uh, a second by Mr. England. Anybody have any questions about, about taking the road off the road list? Being none, I'll ask clerk Call World.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolton?
Yes.
Carlene Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Steven Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Ricky?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Roodland?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any one more change your vote?
Item number four passes twenty-one to zero. We'll move on to item number five, the Health Department Appropriation Amendment. Talking particularly to twenty minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is an amendment to the original appropriation memo we did when we started the Health Department construction project. Um, due to the changing nature of the grant, where we can give additional funds, and the, uh, timeline, uh, surrounding those funds, complicated by the interest rates changing, uh, I think it's in the county's best interest for us to change the way we're gonna pay those funds back. Uh, previously, we had said we would pay them back once the county was reimbursed. Uh, so the money, when the money came into debt service, we didn't pay, um, the lender back. I think it's in a better interest to the county to pay the lender back within ten days of borrowing the funds out of debt service, since we do have, um, uh, there's a surplus there. We have budgeted it to pay it all back this year anyway. Um, so this just is changing the way we are paying it and increasing the total outlay by one point four million dollars.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, Mr. Ruble, and a second for Mr. Tyler. Any questions about the Health Department Appropriation Amendment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, since this, I do have a conflict of interest. I have a family member that worked, worked on this, this deal. And I think I will abstain on this.
All right, it will be noted when we pass. Any more questions? I'll ask clerk Call World.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolton?
Yes.
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Steven Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Ricky?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Roodland?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Abstaining.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any one more change your vote? Luthen?
Item number five passes twenty and one abstains. We'll move on to item number six, which is a lease agreement for the schools for a postage leader. Uh, it's a five-year, five-year lease, as the reason is coming forward, the county commission. Did I hear a motion to approve that? Oh, a motion, Mr. England, and a second for Mr. Savage. Anybody have any questions about the postage leader? Call that. Being none, I'll ask clerk Call World.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolton?
Yes.
Carlene Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Steven Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Ricky?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Roodland?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any one more change your vote?
Item number six passes twenty-one to zero. Item number seven is Resolution Number Nine, uh, the federal programs, but the word that they approved without, that's right. That's the resolution that we got to force. Now, we generally do this weekly every year, because all the federal programs can't be changed. Got a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, Mr. Ruble, and a second for Mr. Ricky. Anybody got any questions about the resolutions? Being none, I'll ask clerk Call World.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolton?
Yes.
Carlene Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes. Yes.
Steven Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Ricky?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Roodland?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any one more change your vote?
Item number seven, Resolution Number Nine, passes twenty-one to zero. We'll move on to item number eight, the General Plan Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a three-part amendment for, uh, Brad Price, who runs our drug court program. He needs to move five hundred and eighty dollars, again, five three nine hundred, to pay for a software that's pretty instead of being covered by the state. Um, five four seven ten is a correction of error made last month. Should've been three fifty, uh, three point two instead of three fifty-five. Uh, that was an amendment, uh, number thirty. And he had, he has had some unexpected error of problems with his security system. He had to have, uh, had to have some, uh, service calls and repairs done on it. He needs to move a thousand dollars in fifty-five five nine. All this money is currently appropriated and, um, all of it is direct funding except for five three nine hundred, but those are our county funds and he's not asking for new money, just a new line.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, Mr. Rippey, to approve? Can I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Dodson, the second. Anybody got any questions about this general public amendment? Any none? I'll ask clerk called Rome.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bowman.
Yes.
Charlie Brown.
Yes.
Charles Dodson.
Yes.
Ray Dean.
Yes.
Steve Quinn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Gillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ian Moffitt.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Fraser.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one more change your vote?
Item number eight passes twenty-one to zero. We'll move on to item number nine, which is an amendment to the ambulance fund budget. And it's a reimbursement for some of the training that the employees get, and this will be employee salaries. Motion to approve. Got motion, Mr. Bell, second for Mr. Moffitt. Any question about this? This is reimbursement from the state. Any questions? Any none? I'll ask clerk called Rome.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bowman.
Yes.
Charlie Brown.
Yes.
Charles Dodson.
Yes.
Ray Dean.
Yes.
Steve Quinn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Gillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ian Moffitt.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Fraser.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one more change your vote?
Item number nine passes twenty-one to zero. We'll move on to item number ten, which is a budget amendment for EMA, which is actually in the ambulance fund budget. And, uh, Mr. Ellis, you'll come explain exactly what we're gonna do with this money?
We have, since we rearranged the structure of how that particular director is paid, there is some money left in this budget year, uh, to purchase a piece of software that will alert the citizens through a text message. Whenever we are going to open an emergency shelter or there is some kind of a weather-related event or a traffic, uh, related event. I talked to some folks at the sheriff's department who've had some issues in some of the country roads where we had to close them because of car accidents. It's been really difficult to reroute people because they didn't know until they drove right up on it. We could tell them ahead of time and also organizes any of our resources that we have for any kind of emergency, whether it be an ambulance, a chainsaw. It doesn't matter what it is, it's categorized and it organizes that as well. It also overlays a map of the entire county. If there is a storm or disaster of any sort, uh, the public can go on to that map. And if they've got trees down or power outage or whatever it may be, they can put a pin on that map. And myself or any of the utilities or whoever signs off on this thing can see where all that's happening in real time. It allows us to respond to an emergency. The actual software itself is eighty-five hundred dollars for the first year. That's to set it up, but it's only twelve hundred dollars to maintain it every year after that. Most of the other systems that will let us alert people and communicate with folks and organize these things is anywhere from forty-five hundred to seventy-five hundred dollars per year. Uh, and this, it's basically, it's the only company that makes this particular piece of software that does multiple different things all in one package. So I had asked the committee and they approved for us to purchase that on what's left of this year's budget going into next year. So when the budget passes through the full court, will be the first time in a while that department's actually had some money to work with. Rather than taking that much right off of that top right now, that was, we thought it'd be best to use some of this leftover money. There's about twelve thousand dollars left that will be unused from the salary line. This would use eighty-five hundred of that. So we still have, you know, thirty-five hundred to get turned back in anyway, just that someone can take advantage of now and not have to, to roll that all out. There are some, you know, with the shelter and the storms and of course, everybody's seen what happened over the weekend in Kentucky. Here in this area, we were in the enhanced orange section, same as London and the other communities up in Kentucky. At six o'clock Friday night, tornadoes was very low. At seven thirty, tornado warnings went out all over the state. And Saturday morning, twenty-eight people in three states were dead. That's how these storms are, are, are different now than they have been in the past in some instances. When everybody gets the alert from the alcohol system or goes to nine-one-one and your phone starts screaming, wakes up in the middle of the night and says, get to shelter. You've got about ten, fifteen minutes. This will send a text message out to folks that subscribe to it, that the shelter's gonna be open hours before the storm's expected to hit. We can post things on Facebook and things of that nature. We want to, but everybody can get a text message. Not everybody's on Facebook. If it's a Friday or Saturday night, folks are watching Netflix and streaming something on Amazon, Daniel Breezy's not interrupting that, that show to let you know there's a storm coming. But everybody's usually got their phone laying right there. So I, I think this would be a good way to let people know what's going on. You know, we're not gonna use it for everything, for chili supper or whatever other event may be going on, but things that the public needs to know safety-wise. That's what this will be used for. Enter inventory and to track a lot of the stuff, the resources, what we do have and what we don't have. We'll be able to see that in real time, uh, with the software. Is that what this is?
Just try to inform the public where would you have to say?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
A move to approve.
Got a motion. Rebecca, the second for Mr. Savage. Anybody else have more questions?
I have a couple of questions. When you said, um, everybody who subscribes to it, we're gonna text message, do you have to pay for it?
No, there is, there is no pay for it. There's no personal information. There will be a link on the website. Folks can go to that link. And they can sign up for an SMS message and put in their phone number, which is basically the technical term for a text message. And whenever we send one out, they'll get the text message.
Okay, so this money's left over in this year's budget, so it's an appropriate thing to spend it for. But what, has there been discussion in your budget meetings to, hey, Jason thankfully has stepped into this job to, and doing a great job. But this could, this was a full-time position. Are we not going to do that again? Have another full-time director?
Uh, well, the, the salary, if we got a corporate for a full-time director, the other people that, that were not interested in that, the salary needed about double for a full-time person.
So I guess the answer's no.
Well, I, I can't tell you that because we're, we're just, this, this is a trial period for you to see what, we, we are getting some response out of what we're doing in EMA now.
Oh, I totally agree, but there's so much involved in EMA in other counties. And I just, I feel like it, it still could be a full-time position.
It might be, once we see what.
But I didn't, I didn't, I, I know this money is here. If it's gone, it's gone and it's time to use it. And this is certainly an initial investment. And I think you said twelve hundred dollars after that. So it, it's a good program, but I was just wondering if there was still discussion to replace that position.
Mr. Allen.
Yeah, and I guess we, we meant, we addressed it, but we had obviously some county powers act that sort of overshadowed what the committee, uh, done, um, a month or so ago. In committee, we actually put, uh, Jason as the interim, uh, director for a year. Uh, and, uh, we're gonna revisit it. We're gonna allow him to sort of build the program up. Uh, and, um, and then we'll revisit it to determine at the time, at that, at, uh, after a year, whether or not, um, we decide that we, we wanna add some money to the budget, uh, for a full-time position or not, but allow him to sort of work on the shelters, work on some of this stuff and really build it, uh, develop that program.
And he is the director, I'm just saying.
My apologies.
Mr. Rob.
So my question is, uh, in regards to, I think Jason's done a fantastic job, but you mentioned that the salary wasn't there to, to support that. And the people wouldn't accept that, that job. Were the people that applied actually interviewed and offered a job?
Uh, when they tell me they won't work for that money, that pretty much is the interview.
So we talked to both of them and they did say that they would not work for that, that money?
No, not thirty thousand dollars, no.
Okay.
I do wanna add something real quick, and, and Jason wants to stand up here, but going back to just the, and, and everybody knows the seriousness of what he did as far as opening up the, the, the center. Uh, the good thing about the phone thing, and I, I can't remember what county it was in, a different state, the story has something like this, is there are a lot of parents who can't, who are disabled, can't work, but their kids have phones. So this, this right here, I think is gonna be a good thing to add because a lot of times the kids will be there and, and may text their friends, say, hey, there's a storm coming. So it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a good thing. And it's, and money-wise, it's not, not pretty much, but we talk about safety of people. Um, I mean, I don't want twenty-eight lives lost in our county, so I feel like it's a good thing, so I appreciate you looking into that.
And, and this does do what about three other pieces of software will do. This particular company's the only one that rolls this into one interface and one system. See, was the better value, the cheapest thing that we could, that, well, the cheapest quote that I got for just the text alerts, a thousand forty-five hundred dollars a year. There was one that does some, some other stuff, uh, with the community, like, you know, calendars and different events and things that other people would have to manage. That was about seventy-five hundred dollars a year. It did not inventory any of our emergency resources. It did not provide any maps or interactive maps that the community could use to, you know. If you have an emergency and there's a lot of trees down in a particular area and you're trying to call it, maybe busy for a while. You know, because everybody else around you's got power outage, trees down, things of that nature. They can go right to this map and put a dot on that map and we can see that right away, uh, whether they call it or not. It's, it's pretty, it's a pretty neat, uh, system.
All right, we got a motion, a second on the floor. I'll ask clerk called Rome.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bowman.
Yes.
Charlie Brown.
Yes.
Charles Dodson.
Yes.
Ray Dean.
Yes.
Steve Quinn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Gillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
No.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ian Moffitt.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Fraser.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one more change your vote?
Item number ten passes twenty-one. We'll move on to item number eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amendment to transfer funds, uh, from various areas to other congregant services for paging, uh, and also to transfer some money in to cover HRA costs.
Got a motion, Mr. England, the second. The second, Mr. Wiltshire. Any questions about the amendment? Any none? I'll ask clerk called Rome.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bowman.
Yes.
Carl, gee, Charlie Brown.
Yes.
Charles Dodson.
Yes.
Ray Dean.
Yes.
Steve Quinn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Gillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ian Moffitt.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Fraser.
Yes.
Chris Rippey.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Any one more change your vote?
Passes twenty-one to zero. Now we'll move on to the third amendment.
This is the list of the numbers. Sheridan, Beltes, Charlie Brown, Sasha Hammond, David Johnson, Jessica Johnson, Ron Stafford Junior, Heather Desuttering, Dee Boy, Lolita M. Burges, Bishop M. Harris, Sheila D. Scott, and Pamela Rowan.
Motion to approve. Got a motion, the second for Mr. Dodson. Any question about the notes? All those in favor of approving or not, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll look both. Last two minutes. We're moving down to under announcements. Uh, we are about to order our first, uh, fuel at our fuel lot. We still like getting the security system entered, everything else is ready to go, so I'm working on that paperwork. Hopefully by the first, the next week, we'll actually be able to start implementing using the fuel lot when we purchase. Uh, we also have on your desk, hate to bring this up, Miss Casey Owens will not be at our next meeting next month. She has, uh, turned in her letter of resignation. She's moving out of the district. And then we just wanna take this time to thank Casey for the dedication and the commitment you made to the county commission.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Appreciate you, and we will be voting on it. We can't accept her resignation until she has, she'll actually be part of the commission of June this way.
Executive Belle, can, um, can we make sure that this, that Casey doing this is not a late April fool's joke before?
Yeah. Maybe it is. Maybe she's just joking with us.
She's been a little weird.
Now we'll move on. Listen, I have a Hillis that's got a special presentation.
Good evening, guys. How are y'all? Been here sitting here for a few minutes. I'm not gonna take much of your time, but I wanted to share a couple of things with you guys in regards to the senior center. Um, I have, actually, I have two videos, so I'm gonna go in two parts, okay? The first thing that I wanna go over is why I'm showing you this video is there is two hundred and nineteen senior centers in the state of Tennessee. And our center was chosen to share a little light on what a congregate meal site is. To give you a little insight, since we've had the pleasure of moving out to our wonderful and new and beautiful location from July. We actually opened July eighth through today's meal. We have served twenty-two thousand and ninety congregate meals in our center, which I think is amazing. We have also offered since July the eighth, or July eighth last year through current today, and I mean that is as current as, uh, four thirty-five this afternoon when I run these reports. We've offered a hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-five unduplicated services. That means that it's unduplicated. They may have came in for insurance, they may have came in for a meal, they may have came in for a computer class, they could've come in for exercise. But out of that time, that's what we've offered. And without the support of you guys and Executive Belle, we would not be able to do this. We would not be able to give this to senior center, or to seniors here in our county. Guys, we are the top center in the state of Tennessee. We offer more congregate meals and we have served more congregate than any other senior center in the state of Tennessee. We are the top for services offered to seniors. So I just wanted to share this video. They chose us for the middle Tennessee area about the importance of a congregate meal. Um, I did, well, some of you may have seen this. I know Christie has seen this. Um, guys, we are a lot. They are using us, our center, our county, as the pilot for the state and what senior center should be. I have been there, will be six years in July when I started out at the center. We had four hundred and fifty-three members. We have two thousand, three hundred and thirty-three members today. That's the lives that we're changing. So I wanna share this video with you and then I am gonna go over the next thing of why we've been chosen. So Jason, do you care to share that video?
It's almost like having Sunday lunch, you know, with people from your church. It's, it gives you a warm feeling to have lunch with folks, you know, it really does. A congregate site brings them together so they can socialize and talk about and, and eat different types of foods and good nutritional foods. It's a lot changing for them.
I was saying when I retired, and, you know, I don't know what I would've done if I hadn't found a place like this to come. I was already getting tired of sitting around the house. I retired in the winter time, you can't get out, do nothing.
Forty-eight percent of the people that eat my meals or eat the meals here, that's their only hot meal a day. That's it. So we're getting to at least make sure that they get hot meals on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We don't come just to eat. We come to socialize. We, we love the people here. And of course, the food is just a plus, you know, we like that too. It's always great. And we just, you know, it's just a, it's, it's the highlight of our week.
My wife wanted me to come, you know, I told her I'll go sign up, but I probably wouldn't go back. Well, I haven't missed ten days probably in a year, right? I come back all the time.
Words can't express it. It's an emotional link. It's all for them. I pour a lot into my job. I love what I do. And it's important that we do all we can for seniors. I'm an advocate for my members and so it's just amazing. I just encourage anybody to see, it's a dream come true, what it is. Some people get it in their mind that you got to be old, you got to be sickly, you got to be feeble to be in the senior center. That's not true at all. It's for people who have retired and they want to do than to sit home, you know?
What'd y'all think about that? Ain't that awesome? I was proud whenever they viewed this, um, last count, it was over twelve thousand views, which is, to me, that's a lot. Because when you work with senior citizens and it's, it's, it's went across to other senior centers, so I was pretty passionate about it. So, um, but the next thing I wanted to talk to you in regards to is you have this wonderful, beautiful, colorful packet in front of you. If you'll take a look at it, I'm gonna go over something with you. Our center was also chosen for the middle Tennessee area by our first lady of Tennessee. Ms. Marie Lee has chosen our center for her Tennessee Kids Serve Summer Challenge. This is for children kindergarten through, upcoming, upcoming kindergarten through sixth grade. And the Tennessee Serves program is for students to get out and volunteer in the community. I have attached different things inside this packet. We're gonna go over it. Um, we were chosen for her to come to our center and she's gonna be there on June the ninth. This is your special invitation. This is an invitation-only event. It's not open to the public. So you have to, if you're interested in coming, I would love for every one of you guys to be there and you can bring a guest. Um, if you have grandchildren or children, anybody that you have liked and bought, I would love for you to bring them. But, uh, the first lady will be there on June the ninth. Um, tentative arrival time for her is around eleven. I have worked with, um, of course Sheriff Matheny and Chief Mosley, and I think he's a- I have worked with, um, of course Sheriff Matheny and Chief Mosley and I think he's a captain? Is he a captain being controlled? Being controlled. They are working with security in the Highway Patrol Department to keep her safe. Because out at the mall, we've got numerous exits, so you will see a lot of law enforcement out there for that day. But on this day, um, we are inviting students to come out and volunteer their time to work with senior citizens. And it may be handing out somewhere. It could be helping pour drinks or helping, um, seniors get to their tables, um, with their plates. So that day, that is their challenge, is to come out and work that day. But also, um, the First Lady is partnering with Samaritan's Feet. Every senior citizen that's there that day is going to receive a new pair of shoes. We have, at this point, we have already ordered two hundred and thirty-seven pairs of shoes, which is great for our members. They are going to be a slip-proof shoe. I've seen them. They're, they're great. I've been working with the First Lady's office for this event. Of course, they say Warren County rolls out the red carpet and that's what I want to do. I would love to see as much representation of elected officials as possible out there that day. I understand if you can only come for lunch, I'll take you for your five minutes or I'll take you the whole entire time. But I just wanted to pass this along to you. Um, gr- uh, of course, Dr. Swallows, the Department of Education works with his office and making sure that this goes out. Some of you may have, may have seen this, if you may not, but you were the first ones to receive an invite for this event. Um, but if you want to, you can go through. I also attached volunteers that afternoon. If anybody, the two of it will happen after lunch. So if any of you can give me some of your time, even if it's happening direct, give stickers out, um, because everybody will have a sticker on that day to be able to access the door. But if any of you could stay and help me that day, I would love it. It would be great. Um, of course, you know, volunteers for the state of the volunteers, right? Um, also, this has got the QPR code, so if you would like to share this with anybody in your area, your community, I would appreciate it. The more children, the better. Um, it's the QPR code. They have to be registered. Um, I've also attached that in Spanish. We do have, uh, several, uh, students in our school system that are Spanish speaking, um, but they speak English, but their parents may need it in Spanish, so I made sure that we got that. But the next packet on there is, tells you about the summer program and what they can do out in the community. How many of you got ball, um, things, ball clubs out? I know Big Way's got a ball field, Morrison's got a ball field, Centertown, but they have ball fields still. So they can actually volunteer and do different things, um, with all kinds of stuff. So I wanted to make sure that I offered this. So the next video is going to show you what happens after, because if these students go in and they complete this challenge, they get to go to Governor's Nation. And that's what I'd love to fill it up with Warren County, but that's just me. Go ahead, Jason, if you don't care. We are so excited that you chose to participate and serve other people this summer. It means so much to people when they are, when they are seen and they feel cared for. And that's what you did this summer. Serving others is important and why, almost because it helps others feel appreciated. Some people don't have like access to all the things that we have, so sometimes it's just going out, just enough. What was your favorite way to serve this summer? Probably getting yourself a little burger. Yeah, it's the old thing, you know, schools. We got her a mac pack in one clock. The governor and I and from my team, we all want to say thank you for serving. We're so proud of you. And we just encourage you to keep doing it. Don't stop serving. In our county, we have numerous ways that they can volunteer, whether it be in any other nonprofit, that they can check off. There's just a simple thing that they turn in the hours that they give. And then that's, that's all I got. But if you're interested in coming that day, I would greatly appreciate anybody. If you've got a guest, you're more welcome to bring a guest that day. I'm going to feed you. I may put you to work, but I'll feed you. Okay? So if you think that you may want to, um, come that day, I need to know by Friday, if at all possible, because for security purposes and I have to turn in the names of people that would like to attend. If you've got children or know of any children that would like to register, just, uh, scan this QPR code. And then if you need any help from there, I'll be more than happy to help sign up anybody that would like to. But thank you for your time.
Thanks, ladies. Hey, Jason, if you would pull up the email, we've had some, some commissioners questioning about their getting their notices. And I want to make sure everybody understands, we've actually changed how you, uh, some of the wording when you get your notice. It had a click here button on the bottom and you can change that to unsubscribe, because we've had several commissioners. If you click on that, it actually unsubscribes your notes. Can you see that?
Where it says click here?
Yeah, yeah. He, but that will change. It's not a change or anything. That's our, it's our change. It actually says unsubscribe now. So we want to make sure everybody understands that. This is what it looks like now. Everybody got their meeting earlier today. And for some people to, they're saying there's no attachment to it. Scroll back down. You have to click on Budget and Finance, just like to get the actual agenda. Can you do that, Jason?
It's a picture. It's not live. It's not online.
Oh, okay. It's not online. But anyway, you have to click on whatever meeting that is to actually get your agenda. I just want everybody to know that and I figured there's some people out there in the public or at least who know that too.
Here's a way to email somebody to reply.
You know, I called Emily this morning. When I got my agenda the first time and I clicked on the, you know, Warren County Commission and pulled up the agenda.
Yeah.
Well, after I looked at it that first time, I went back again and it was gone. Every time I clicked on it, it'd come up. It was a blank page. So, but she reset it today and it was okay.
It's okay. We have had some issues, but I wanted to clarify if anybody's given questions. But once you unsubscribe, if you hit that button down there, unsubscribe, yes, resign you up and they have to send it back in.
I did unsubscribe because I was giving some committee members meetings and I wasn't getting Budget and Finance. But I'd get Econ and Ag. I'd get, uh, uh, Health and Water, but I wouldn't get Budget and Finance or Financial Management. I just wasn't getting something. I'm getting emails from everybody in the country.
Speak to that, what may be happening there. And I revise is going to try to fix this. But at certain times of the month, we may get four different meeting notices that day. Might not be on the same day.
It wasn't on there like that either. I know what you're talking about.
But if she sends out one for Budget and Finance at nine o'clock that morning for next week, and then at eleven o'clock, Policy and Personnel's got one three days from now. You're still going to have the one email. It's going to give you, it's going to give you a new one. It'll say no reply, but when you open it, you're like, what happened to that Budget Finance? If you'll scroll down, those blue hyperlinks, every one of them will be there. You won't get an actual separate email unless it's the next day and there's a new meeting posted. And you'll get a brand new email, but if there's two or three or four or fifty meetings posted in that twenty-four hour period, it's going to, it's going to link with that original email. You'll have to open that and then scroll down to the various meetings. So you may get one later on that afternoon for County Corrections. Well, wait a minute, what happened to that Budget Finance meeting? I looked at it this morning because it's got the email at nine o'clock. It's there. They're stacked on top of each other. If you notice, you can open those emails up and there's multiples. So sometimes you may, you'll think, well, I didn't get this one or that one, but you got one for Econ and Ag, but if you look on down, there's others there. It's weird, I know. They're trying to fix that, but right now, that's how their system works. We need to try to do best, we can't say save us about twenty-six thousand dollars a year to use this versus what we were.
All right. Anybody else have any more announcements?
Go ahead, Gary.
I got one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Eight o'clock, Monday morning at the airport memorial service. Let's, all the commissioners, again, show up and represent. A lot of commissioners come every year. And the veterans appreciate it. I know the families of the, of the fallen.
I do have one. June fourteenth, I'm having the Phillips Prairie Memorial Steak and Chicken and Wing, a wing and rib contest cook-off out there. Um, everybody needs to come and support that. Yeah, it's a barbecue. Probably the, next year, we're going to probably move it to the three-star level.
Anybody else have any more to add?
Mr. Chairman. I'll take it in a second. Uh, I, I wish I would have said something earlier during the discussion and I didn't do it, but after Mr. Glenn's comments earlier, I want everybody to realize something. I don't think nobody here is trying to attest his ability of what his, what he does at his job or how he runs his department. But I know all directors here, whether you're hired or elected, we all go above and beyond at times to do things that we're not supposed to do or, or, let me back up. Not supposed to, don't have to do. Thank you. I didn't mean to say it like that. Yeah, we, we don't have to do. But we all go above and beyond to do things like that that we don't have to do. I think it just boils down to, it's just a common courtesy. We're all here together to try to do things for the best way of Warren County and to work together with each director, hired or elected as commissioners and vice versa with us. I think it just goes back to that. I just, I know it's been mentioned several times and he gave a really good report at the end of his talk right there. You know, he gave a great report. And so he sits back, he sits back here. He has enough time to sit back here while we're going through everything else to jot something down on a piece of paper, just to, just to be a common courtesy. I think it just all goes back to we're a team. Everybody work together. I think that's what it boils down to, you know, and I just wanted to say that. I wanted to say it earlier and I just didn't do it, but after his comments, I just wanted to let everybody know it's, we're not justifying what he does or don't do in his office. We're just asking for a simple, little, easy, something that we can give the taxpayers, because some people don't know, but it's amazing that the people that listen and that watch these things or listen to them on the radio and actually watch these things and just a little something can give the taxpayers just a little bit of notification of what might be going on or, hey, they may be getting the road paved, who knows? Thank you.
Well, everybody knows you're, you're real quiet and, you know, you probably just didn't have enough nerve.
Yeah, that's what, well, that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
All right. I got a motion. I hear a second. Got a second. Mr. Dodson, Hall of Babers, say it.
Pull back my coat.